Regular meeting of the Escanito Union School District Board of Trustees. I'd like to call the board to order. And if we could please ask Alex Mansfi out from Lincoln Elementary to come forward to the podium to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of United States and the republic.
All right, we do have three members present, Mr. Paulson, Ms. Harper, and Mr. Houston. And a report out of closed session.
In closed session, the board considered dismissal charges against a classified probationary employee. Took action to approve those charges and release employee number six, five, eight, four, seven, four by a vote of three to zero.
Thank you very much. At this point, we're looking for an approval of the agenda. If there is anything that needs to be changed.
I move approval.
Okay, I am not sure what we're seeing.
I move approval of the agenda.
One second.
All right, Ms. Harper moves. Mr. Houston seconds. All in favor, please vote. Any changes or modifications? Looking for a motion?
Can we, we, I, I move approval, but we only have two.
We are not going to be able to do that. We're going to have to postpone approval of those minutes until the next meeting because we will not have a quorum on that vote. Moving on to item D one, recognition of student excellence. Dr. Filia.
Yes, well, we are once again so happy to be able to celebrate our students from across the district with our student excellence awards. So we're going to begin this evening highlighting Hidden Valley, and we actually have a video to share.
Greetings. I'm Dr. Norton, and I'm thrilled to serve as the principal of Hidden Valley Middle School, home of Escandito's future leaders. We hope you enjoy learning more about the phenomenal programs we offer.
Build the self-worth of every student through our character education, restorative practices, and our innovative blended learning curriculum that offers students a voice and choice.
How about our first question is, what are you excited about?
Community circle brings students together in a safe space at least once a week. It helps build bonds of friendship and trust and sets the stage for the learning environment.
It's incredibly rewarding and students love it and teachers love it as well. So I know this started that.
Students feel a power over their writing that comes from a deep understanding of what they read.
Writing, even for adults, is hard, and the students keep trying and getting better and better, and it's really fun to see.
What was the tricky thing about ratios?
In math, group exercises help reinforce key concepts with practical applications.
A lot of math at this point becomes abstract.
Science class is focused on gathering evidence and forming a hypothesis to learn how the natural world works.
My goal is really for them to be just questioning the natural world around them and be able to find the validity of the things that they're discovering.
We lead the way in encouraging healthy habits for the mind and body. Mission breaks and a healthy lunch keep our kids fueled up to learn. And students experience fun activities with a fully credentialed PE teacher five days a week.
They're growing and they need to get outside and run and have fun and laugh and do teamwork with their peers.
Wow, some of you are amazing artists.
Hidden Valley Middle School offers exploratory courses where kids can discover their unique talents and abilities.
They feel proud. I have kids in the sixth grade that are better artists than I will ever imagine being.
From color pencils to culinary arts, these kids are getting a taste for kitchen skills that they can use at home.
It makes me want to make more stuff for my family and like, I want to be like the chef in the house. People can be like, oh, that's like, that's good and stuff.
Our community thrives with the support of Hidden Valley's parents. The PTA provides special opportunities for student projects with money from grants.
Because they are becoming so much more independent and they have a lot of really great ideas that PTSA can help them realize.
Working together, the HVMS staff nurtures students who want to make a positive impact in their community and contribute to making the world a better place.
All right, and next we'll go ahead and invite Principal Breonna Norton.
Well, good evening. As we've already mentioned, I'm Dr. Norton, and I am the passionate principal at Hidden Valley Middle School, where we are now the Panthers, by the way. So it's pretty awesome. We're very excited. I'm again excited to be here tonight as we gather to celebrate the hard work and dedication and achievements of our incredible students across EUSD. And along with our families and educators who have supported them through every step. Just really quickly, I just wanted to recognize and thank our school board, our cabinet members, as well as our union presidents for their tireless leadership and unwavering commitment to ensuring that we can honor our students in meaningful ways. To our HVMS families, thank you for your continued support and partnership. Your encouragement and involvement make a lasting impact on your students' success. And most importantly, to our students, tonight is all about you. Your dedication, perseverance, and passion inspire us all. We are here to celebrate your achievements and bright futures ahead of you. So I'm going to call up our three students. Wood Kunga, Nima, come on up, Damian Fuentes, and Damian Sanchez. We are going to start with sixth grade. First, we have Kunga Nima, who is a kind and respectful student who consistently supports his classmates with patience and generosity. He is highly focused and excels in his classwork, yet remains humble and encouraging to those around him. Rather than judging others, he lifts them up, always willing to lend a helping hand. Kunga demonstrates collaboration, working together with others to create a positive and inclusive classroom environment. His dedication and compassion make him a valued member of our school community. Congratulations, Kunga. We're going to go to the next one, yes, before, okay, perfect. So our seventh grade recipient is Damian Fuentes. He is a dedicated and hardworking student who takes pride in his learning, always giving his best effort. He is kind, respectful, and actively contributes to building a positive classroom community. With his attention to detail and commitment to both academics and his peers, he has been a true role model in our micro school. Damian exemplifies the collaborator competency, working well with others and contributing to a supportive and inclusive environment. The teachers say they are very excited to see all that you are going to accomplish in the future. Congratulations, Damian Fuentes. Our eighth grade recipient is also by the first name of Damian, but it's Damian Sanchez. He is also a very kind, respectful, and hardworking student who brings positivity to every interaction. He greets others with the biggest smile ever, always taking the time to brighten someone's day. His enthusiasm for learning, especially in science class, has grown over the past two years. And he remains a dedicated and self-motivated learner. Damian embodies the empowered learner competency, taking ownership of his learning and actively pursuing personal growth. It has been an honor, according to your teachers, to watch you thrive as an HVMS Panther. Congratulations.
Alrighty, and next up, we'd like to be highlighting Lincoln Elementary, and they also have a video to share.
Hi, I'm Mr. Hoff, the proud principal here at Lincoln Elementary School, home of the Lincoln Lions. You see, we believe that every child that walks into any of our learning zones has the right to a quality education. And it's our responsibility to make that dream a reality.
At Lincoln Elementary, students engage in rigorous learning through a curriculum rich in collaboration, creativity, and problem solving.
Best SABCs, thank you for being helpful.
Through the dual-language immersion program, students are applying their multicultural and multilingualistic skills to broaden their communications.
I'm in level twenty-four cubic centimeters. Yeah, good job. Went to school in this district. I grew up learning Spanish. Being able to teach it to people in my community is amazing and I love it.
A comprehensive education goes beyond academics. We lead the way in encouraging healthy habits for the mind and body through nutrition, the arts, social, emotional learning, and physical activity.
We focus on teamwork, on hustling, and on encouraging others.
The Lincoln Lions experience fun physical fitness activity two days a week with a fully-credentialed PE teacher. The nutrition team ensures every child has access to healthy and delicious food by offering breakfast and lunch on campus every day at no cost. After lunch, students take responsibility for their food waste. Lincoln's food recycling program serves as a model for the entire school district. No education is complete without the arts. Here at Lincoln, students are provided weekly instrument lessons by a credentialed music teacher.
We teach at all the levels here. So I teach TK, three, fourth, and fifth graders. So all the kids get to experience music.
Learning doesn't stop at the end of the school day. That's why students at Lincoln are offered the opportunity to join our extensive enrichment programs, such as coding, where I'm setting up a program for their robot to follow to get from point A to point B. And our Lion TV news program. At Lincoln, students are growing up to be critical thinkers who are capable of engaging in deep conversations about their community and the world. They are scholars and athletes. They are artists and engineers. They are scholars and athletes. They are artists and engineers. At Lincoln, students are the future.
Alrighty, and we'll go ahead and invite up Principal Jocelyn.
Good evening, buenas noches, Superintendent Dr. Ibarra, Cabinet Members, President of Board, Paulson, Board Members. I also want to thank our amazing Lincoln staff who are also here tonight and our beautiful Lincoln families. Uh, I am here to speak about three amazing students as representatives of our school. So if I could please invite up here Elisa and Delson and Alex, if you could come and join me up at the podium tonight. Delson Santos. Okay. Delson Santos Rios is truly a miracle. In his 10 years, he has faced more challenges than many might encounter in a lifetime. When he was just seven years old and in second grade, he fell seriously ill and spent three months in the hospital fighting for his life. With the unwavering support of his doctors, therapists, medications, and the love and encouragement of his friends and family, Delson made an incredible recovery. Today, he not only carries the strength of that experience, but also proudly sports a new cochlear implant, a testament to his resilience and the care that helped him through. Delson approaches every challenge with enthusiasm and excels at what he sets his mind to. In fact, he demonstrates remarkable leadership skills in his role as a conservation ambassador of our school. Delson has a natural ability to advocate for himself, ensuring the needs are met while setting an example for his peers. His kindness and bright personality uplift everyone he encounters, bringing a sense of warmth and encouragement to the classroom. Whether he's collaborating with classmates or tackling a new challenge, Delson's perseverance and optimism shine through, making him a truly remarkable part of our school community. Congratulations, Delson. Alex Lozada Mansia. From kindergarten through fifth grade, Alex has consistently shown a strong commitment to his academics, personal growth, and making a positive impact within the Lincoln School community. Throughout his time in the Dual Language Immersion Program, Alex has excelled in both English and Spanish, achieving biliteracy and bilingualism. He consistently demonstrates academic readiness, going above and beyond in assessments like eye ready and eye station, where he consistently performs at grade level. Beyond academics, Alex also demonstrated remarkable leadership. He actively participates in the Lincoln School Video Production Club, where he contributes by writing, editing, and producing short films. Alex is a well-rounded student who excels in everything he takes on. He is not only a high achiever, but also a caring, dependable individual who always offers a helping hand to others and shares thoughtful advice to his peers. His perseverance and dedication ensure that he accomplishes whatever he sets his mind to. Congratulations, Alex, on earning the Student Excellence Award. You truly deserve it. Elisa Martinez is one of the most caring and understanding and loving human beings you will ever meet. Her teacher, Mrs. Martsov, has had the privilege of seeing Elisa shine and develop these last four months in her classroom. Elisa has shown an immense amount of growth, not only in her academics, but in her character development as well. Hands down, Elisa is one of those people everyone would want as a friend. Elisa is quite tenacious and does not back down from challenging tasks and always tries her best in everything that she does. Elisa has grit and she always perseveres, a quality found in those who truly succeed. She cares about others around her and always brings a positive attitude and smile when coming to school. Elisa will only continue to grow, and we can't wait to see what she brings to the table in the next, in the next months and years to come. Elisa, you are an excellent and worthy recipient of the Student Excellence Award. You make our Lincoln family very, very proud. Congratulations.
And next we'll be highlighting Rose Elementary, and they also have a video.
Hello, my name is Laura Ruggles, and I am the proud principal of Rose Elementary School, home of the Dolphins. Here at Rose, our students are working hard on building relationships, collaborating, and connecting with the community around us. I hope you'll enjoy seeing some of the amazing things happening here at Rose School.
At Rose Elementary, we provide a 21st century education that focuses on the whole child to prepare our students to thrive in an ever-changing world.
It is an exciting day here at Rose. We are having our monthly awards this morning.
Proud parents watch as their kids are recognized for demonstrating a growth mindset.
Hundreds, tens, one.
In the classroom, partner exercises and active lessons make learning math fun.
It's so great because they're super engaged. They're excited to build the number. They're excited to be working with a partner. They're excited to be going back and forth so they're not stuck sitting in their seat.
We're going to be working on that exact skill.
Math intervention provides personalized attention so students can get the extra support they need.
And all of a sudden, the light bulb comes on and math becomes easier for them.
What do pandas eat?
This kindergarten lesson about panda bears has several layers. An interactive lesson.
Going to sit in a circle.
Sharing facts with the help of a furry friend. And then a fun art project.
Kindergarten's great because the kids are so sweet. They're so motivated to learn and they love following the rules and feeling proud of themselves and it's just fantastic.
When she saw me, she was really happy that I was here.
Once a month, parents are invited to Lunch and Learn, an opportunity to connect with their kids and school staff on campus.
What I liked the best was that they even provided the opportunity to come, getting to step away from work and spending some extra time with your kids is always great.
Congratulations on being selected as a Dolphin delegate, kindness delegate.
The Dolphin delegates lead the way in showing kindness on campus and have the chance to practice public speaking at school.
This is an awesome opportunity to gain some of those leadership skills, especially to pass on to any program they want to be involved in in middle school.
Keep those eyes up.
Learning doesn't stop at the end of the school day. Students at Rose Elementary School are offered extensive enrichment programs like the nationally award-winning Ignite Dance Team.
We take kids that have no dance experience. We get them ready to compete and actually express how they feel that through dance.
At Rose Elementary, our team of educators work with students to make a positive impact on the community while making the world a better place.
All right, and next we'll have Principal Laura Ruggles.
Good evening, President Paulson, Board of Education, Dr. Ibarra and Cabinet. It is an absolute honor to be here tonight as the proud principal of Rose Elementary to introduce you to three of Rose's amazing Dolphins. But before we recognize them, I would like all of our family members and staff to please stand and be recognized, that I know there's lots of them here tonight. Thank you so much for being here. If I could invite Alexander, Alina, and Shailin to come join me up here. Alexander Arroyo is in Mrs. Hill's first grade class. Every day, Alex shows what it means to have a growth mindset. As an empowered learner, he reminds himself and others that it is okay to make mistakes and encourages the whole class to keep trying. He can often be heard saying, it's okay, we're just learning. He knows that making mistakes shows that we are all learning, students and adults alike. Alex is also an ethical scholar who finds ways to make positive impact at Rose School. Alex shows care and compassion for others and uses his voice to stand up for what is right. Alex spreads joy across the school by greeting all staff members by name in the morning. We are so fortunate to have such an inspirational first grader at Rose School. Congratulations. Alina Reyes is in Mrs. Shimon's second grade class. Alina has faced many challenges in her eight years of life and always pushes through with determination and grace. Throughout all subject matters, Alina is an effective communicator, being able to clearly articulate her ideas as well as her reasoning. As an empathetic collaborator, her kindness is felt throughout the school and her smile lights up the room. With all of this and so much more, this is why we know Alina Reyes is going to be successful in whatever path she chooses. Congratulations, Alina. All right, Shailin Peters is in Mrs. Senna Frenchie's third grade class. Shailin demonstrates mastery of essential knowledge and skills by reflecting on and revising her thinking. She challenges herself by working with fourth grade level texts and takes on this challenge with a can-do attitude and a growth mindset. As an empathetic collaborator, she communicates with purpose and articulates coherent ideas to her classmates. Shailin holds herself accountable for what she thinks, says, and does. In her quiet and unassuming ways, Shailin exemplifies all seven pillars of EUSD's learner profiles. Congratulations.
And next we'll be highlighting our state preschool program, and we have a video for them as well.
Hi, my name is Lorraine Silva, and I have the privilege of being the coordinator for the EUSD State Preschool Program. Come join me and explore some of the wonderful things that happen in our state preschool program and see why we have been rated a five out of five with Quality Counts California.
At EUSD, we believe that each child is a unique, capable individual who will be successful with support from their family and their community. Our state-funded preschool program is offered at seven elementary schools to qualifying families, providing a safe nurturing environment for children to learn, grow, and explore. We focus on developing self-help, social, emotional, and physical growth. During family-style breakfast at Juniper Elementary, students gain independence by helping serve food.
How are you feeling today?
Teachers encourage conversations about feelings.
I'll get you a cherry for excited.
And daily topics like the weather.
One of the first things they're actually learning is having those conversations, the critical thinking, even expanding their vocabulary.
And when they're done, everyone helps to clean up. Children are learning healthy habits like routinely washing their hands.
Everybody, go clean up.
Then we're on the move. Outside playtime isn't just having fun to get the wiggles out. They're practicing gross motor skills, building cognitive abilities, and socializing.
Learning how to interact with other people and how to build relationships is very important for us.
Back in the classroom, we follow a one teacher to eight student ratio.
She hopped onto his tail.
Allowing us to focus on developing early language and literacy skills.
Maybe next time.
Tailored to each student's unique progress.
We're always observing the children. We take notes on what they say, what they do, and we plan our lessons based on that.
Play-based instruction. And education through music. Not only makes learning fun, these strategies cultivate a love for school. This preschool class at Lincoln Elementary has a manager system. Students learn independence and responsibility with important jobs.
Whether it's feeding our classroom cat, Herbie, or our classroom cat, Rainbow, each day they know that when they see their picture up there, it is their turn to do that task.
Our preschool classrooms are specially designed with meaningful learning environments. Interest centers include science, art, dramatic play, quiet corners, building blocks, and more.
It's the foundation for children for their academic careers. Learning how to solve problems, how to create friendships with their peers, and how to be able to label their emotions.
EUSD's State Preschool Program: Shaping Successful Academic Futures Today.
All right, so we'll invite up Lorraine Silva.
Good evening, President Paulson and Board Members, Dr. Ibarra and Cabinet. Thank you for the opportunity to share some of our shining stars for preschool. And every year I say they get smaller and smaller, but they don't continue to surprise us with all of their learning and all of their kindness. So I'd like to call up some of our students. Can I please have Camila come on up? And Rebecca. And Charlotte. And just like our kiddos, we're going to keep it short and sweet. Alrighty, we're going to start with Camila. Camila Daniel Basa-Garcis is a student at Glenview Elementary. And her teachers would like to share, and her teacher is here, Ms. Morales. So thank you first of all, if we can have our, our parents and our teachers, just thank you so much for being here. So Ms. Morales is the teacher. And as you can expect, when she, when Camila came to school, she was very shy and she would only interact with adults. Now she is playing and interacting with her peers, is confident about herself, and always comes to school with a smile on her face. She participates in all classroom activities, follows directions and expectations, and is always eager to learn. Her teachers are so happy to have her in the classroom. She's a great role model and a team player. Congratulations, Camila. Rebecca Ada Mendoza. Rebecca comes to us for her second year at Pioneer Elementary, and she was donated by her teacher, Ms. Aviles, who happens to be our Teacher of the Year. Rebecca has made great progress in her two years with us, one of them being especially her social emotional learning. She used to get really upset when things didn't go her way, but now she is learning to recognize her feelings and she's working through any event by expressing her emotions. Rebecca, Rebecca is very helpful in the classroom. She is kind to all of her classmates and very friendly. She gets along well with everyone. Congratulations, Rebecca. And Charlotte Rivas Rodriguez. Charlotte comes from a very supportive family. Her, her mom is one of our PAC representatives, Parent Advisory Committee. She is one of our students at Central Elementary with Ms. Lopez. She is an outstanding child who's always willing to help other students. She has developed great strengths in the classroom and helps other children. She is kind to others. She makes friends, and whenever anyone is in need, Charlotte is there to help. Congratulations, Charlotte. And whenever anyone is in need, Charlotte is there to help. Congratulations, Charlotte.
All right, everybody. Well, we want to thank you all so much for coming out. We are going to take a five-minute break to give everybody time to get underway. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you, parents. We convene with any public comments, any cards, seeing no cards, we have no public hearings tonight. So we will go to a report from CSEA Chapter 150.
Good evening. We've met, well, we've met already. That's why I'm not being too cordial, because we've already, you know, we've already talked. So we appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. CSEA Chapter 150 would like to emphasize that classified staff are a vital part of this educational community and we recognize the insecurity many of our families are experiencing. We observe the noticeable shift in students' behavior, attendance, and the overall climate on campus, and we are prepared to take action, both on camp, oh, take action, pause. But both on campus and off-campus, our students and families are understandably concerned about their safety and well-being due to recent political actions. We are confident in your awareness of the situation and in the collaborative efforts you are making within your authority to ensure our campuses remain safe, spaces for all students to learn and excel. Thank you for understanding that the classified members of the, wait. Thank you for understanding that the classified members of this community are equally committed to supporting our families. We appreciate the assistance and comfort they need, standing ready to make a positive impact. Thank you.
And thank you all of the classified staff for everything you're doing to keep things calm and keep things running effectively at our schools. Thank you all. All right, next we have the Escondido Elementary Educators Association.
Good evening, President Paulson, Board Members, Dr. Barr and Cabinet. I want to thank all of our principals for being here tonight. It's nice to see you guys all in one place, smiling, of course. Waiting for your iReady data. I want to thank Patrick Newton and Audrey Frank for visiting with our sped department the other day and talking about a lot of our concerns. It was really nice for them to take the time to sit with our employees and let them share their concerns and come up with some valuable solutions. So thank you so much, Patrick and Audrey, for that. And I also want to thank all of our teachers that are working extremely hard these days. More and more is being packed onto them and not much is being taken away. So I want to thank all of our working teachers. Hang in there and we'll get through the year. So thanks.
And once again, thank you to all of our teachers for everything they're doing because we agree, they are doing a tremendous amount and a tremendous lot of good. Written communications have been distributed to all members. Are from the Consent Agenda Item F1, any items that we would like called for consent or separate consideration?
I don't have.
Looking for a motion for approval of Consent Agenda?
Approval of the Consent Agenda?
I'll say it.
Ms. Harper moves. Mr. Houston seconds. Please vote. And motion passes three to zero with two not present. Moving on. Two of the 2425 of the LCP and iReady winter results. Dr. Phil Young.
All right, well, good evening. All of our students take the iReady diagnostic assessment three times per year. And with this tool, we're able to monitor the academic progress of students. It's a personal, it's a personal decision, it's a work to our students. And so our students in grades kindergarten through grade took the second iReady diagnostic and this evening we will be able to provide an overview of those results and by district and by grade level. The information shared this evening will also include some statistical results based on matched cohort data. Again, I want to thank all of our principals who are here and the audience to listen to the presentation. We want to acknowledge the ongoing efforts by our principals, our support staff, our paraprofessionals, also our teachers, of course. We know that teaching and learning is complex work and we're working to meet the needs of each individual child. We want to acknowledge their commitment, the commitment of our staff members, and just again, on an ongoing basis, express our deep appreciation for all of their work. So I think so.
Good evening, Board President Paulson, Board Members, Superintendent Ibarra, and Cabinet. I'm honored to be here to share some of our 2024-25 iReady Winter Assessment data with you. Okay, we're going to start with, first of all, I want to say that we're presenting the data a little bit differently than we have in the past based on some of your feedback and some of what we've learned from the data. So this is a graph showing the overall relative placement of students. It's a matched cohort, which means there are students who were in our district for the entire time between the fall of 2324 and the winter of 2425. And we're looking at several things. You'll note that if you look at just fall 2324 through spring 2324, you'll expect to see students first come into a grade level. They're being tested on that grade level standards. They haven't been taught the standards yet, so they tend to score a little bit better in the winter and and it starts again the next year. Well, our school district shows a lot of the expected growth. Any school district would show growth. There's a difference between how many students are at the high end and the low end, but all show that trend of expected growth. But what we're looking at now is the growth year over year. So we're looking to see if winter, if there's a difference between in the same grade level, not necessarily by kids, but by the grade level, if there's a difference in the percentage of students who were at that, that blue level of mid or above grade level. And that's one of our dashboard goals, that students between spring and spring, sorry, not students, but grade levels would make a 5% gain from spring to spring. So in the winter, we're looking for a 2.5% gain in that, that blue strip. And of course, we're not ignoring the other placement levels. We know that we have students who are scoring below grade level. We need to work on increasing those numbers as well. But most of the focus of this presentation is going to be around that goal of increasing the mid or above by 5%. And as that happens, then typically you do start to reduce the students who are below grade level. Okay, so that was math for the whole district. And this breaks it down by grade level. And again, these are students who were, they're students who are here both, the cohort that I took from was here for both assessments, but it's not the same kids. It's grade level. For, for instance, the kindergarten cohort took the test in the 2324 test in kindergarten and that first, sorry, I'm explaining that wrong. The kindergarten, they're not the same kids. So the kindergarten kids in 2324 are different than the kindergarten kids in 2425, if that makes sense. So the, that are, this is math. Our eighth grade level met exceeded our goal at 3.13. And our kindergarten and first grade cohort made progress. And you can see when we break it down by elementary and middle, our middle schools in general made progress. They're, they're getting closer to making that 2.5% growth. Okay, now we're going to take a look at it by grade level. Okay, here we're looking at a cohort of students who took the iReady test when we first started giving the iReady test and have been here ever since. So these are current fourth graders who started taking the assessment in the fall of 202021. That particular year, if you may recall, was when we were back in school with our hybrid program and we had a couple cycles that we had to shut down schools and it was an interesting year. And that year we decided that we would give kindergarten a break and did not test our kindergarten students at the mid-level. So that's, or the winter test diagnostic too. So that's why you'll see that that's missing. And you can see here that as you go through the years, you see that same trend that we start the year off with a lower level or a smaller number of students at that proficient level, and that grows. If you were to look at this data, look at the students who grew. If you look grade over grade, this cohort showed an increase of 4.01 percentage points in the number of students who scored at the mid or above grade level between third and fourth grade on the winter test. Okay, then if we look at our students, our current fifth grade students who were first graders when we started giving the iReady assessments, this cohort came close to meeting their winter to winter growth goal between fourth and fifth grade with an increase of 2.36 percentage points of students scoring at the mid or above grade level. Then look at our sixth, current sixth grade students who started when they second grade. This is one of my favorite slides because this one actually shows, if you look spring to spring to spring, it shows sustained growth for every, every year in the spring. So there's a slight increase in the growth every year. So this is our, our best slide and this is a slide that we want to produce more of. Okay, look at our current seventh grade students who were third graders at the beginning of our iReady assessment journey. This group showed sustained growth on the spring assessment, third through fifth grade, but lost their momentum after fifth grade. Then finally, these are our current eighth grade students who started in fourth grade. And this group shows a significant increase of 4.99 percentage points in the number of students scoring at mid or above grade level on the winter assessment between seventh and eighth grade. So what I'm noticing is that for students who have been with us the whole, that particular group of students, the percentage of students that are making or getting close to our greater than if we were to look at the whole group that includes students who are coming and going. We go to reading. Again, this is a matched cohort set of data showing fall of 2324 through winter of 2425. And the winter to winter comparison shows a very slight increase in the percentage of students at mid or above grade level. And unfortunately, an increase in the percentage of students scoring below grade level as well. We highlighted seventh, eighth grade who have both exceeded the growth goal. And that fourth and fifth grade made some progress. And you can see that our middle school also made progress if you look at just the middle school data. And look at our grade level again with our matched cohort. So matched cohorts of students who have been with us since the beginning are both about 800. Of them started, most of their cohorts started out at between 1,300 and 1,400 students. Okay, yes, this chart shows our current fourth grade students. And this is our only graph where this particular cohort has not been able to show any sustained growth. Then look at our current fifth graders who were first graders of the test. The cohort has 29% of students scoring, they're sustaining around 29% of students scoring at mid or above grade level on the spring assessment between second and fourth grade. Then they haven't taken their spring assessment yet, so there's a chance that they'll continue to sustain it. Then next we have our current sixth graders who started the test in second grade. And this group showed an increase of 6.55 percentage points in the numbers above on the winter assessment between fifth and sixth grade. Then when we look at our seventh grade cohort, this cohort made an even bigger jump. They showed a significant growth of 7.79 percentage points in the numbers to score at mid or above grade level on the, this was actually the spring assessments between fifth and sixth grade. So that's a, that's a nice jump for an end-of-year assessment. Then our last group, our current eighth graders. These students showed sustained growth in the percentage of students at mid or above grade level between fifth and seventh grade on the spring assessment. And this cohort also showed an increase of 4.99 points on the percentage of students scoring at mid or above on the winter assessment between seventh and eighth grade. So I have high hopes for this cohort scoring. So I have high hopes for this cohort scoring very well, and I think the the high school district will be pleased at the results. Okay, we spent a little bit of time looking at the whole district at grade levels. Now we'd like to highlight some of the fantastic work of our school grade levels. So chart shows that the the goal of at least two point five percent growth between winter to winter on the the math test. So here you see that all of these schools.
Sorry, is that the same kids or just we first grade to next year's first grade or last year's first grade to this year's first?
It's it's if I'm a first grade grade level, I'm comparing my last year's scores to this year's scores. So first grade last winter to first grade this winter, so not the same kids.
Okay, thank you.
And here you can see that we actually have some schools that that are are really doing amazing work and have not just one, but three grade levels who have who have met that goal. We have Conway, Miller, Reading Creek, Rock Springs, and Rose. In addition to clearly every elementary school that has at least one grade level that met the growth goal. Then up to middle school, you can see that we had most of our middle schools making growth with at least one grade level and all of them exceeded the growth goal. And then Delty did a fantastic job and have has two grade levels, eighth grade made phenomenal growth. Then on to our reading. And here we have a number of schools that's had at least two grade levels that met the growth goal. We had Miller actually had three to those schools. That another school that I want to point out is Rock Springs. Rock Springs had two grade levels that met the growth goal and also had three grade levels, I think, and they had several in ELA. So the reason I wanted to point them out is we're seeing a trend with that school because they also had did very well on the casp and their California school dashboard showed a lot of growth as well. So we really wanted to highlight them and they'll be sharing, Miller Springs will be sharing some of the wonderful things they're doing. Then we move on to middle school. This is great because every single middle school had at least one grade level that met the growth goal. Bear Valley and Del Dios each had two grade levels and you can see that or most of the schools exceeded the growth goal. Okay, I'll let Laura move on to principal actions.
Okay, so a lot of work that has been occurring on an ongoing basis, taking all information, our goals have been really focused in on that. All of our principal meetings are, we've shifted the structure of those meetings in an effort to ensure that the they are in cohorts and they also have an opportunity to do similar work to what we're asking of our teacher teams, which is where they come together, they're looking at their data, they're creating goal. And then they're also identifying specific actions of things that they want to be focusing on. Support teaching school sites. And so really, a lot of the conversations that we are having with our principals again is to really support them in that work and ensure they're really being thoughtful about their actions and how they're really highlighting with the strengths based talking to their teacher teams, giving, making sure that their discussions are are focused around best practices and sharing their ideas of how to best meet the of students. Another key piece in the discussions are focusing on differentiation, on talking about their data, really kind of drilling it. The team Kathleen and her team really worked on ensuring that there's a lot of access to any questions that they may have, that they can take a look at what are the strengths on the campus, which teams are are showing some some positive growth. And they can learn from each other and share those ideas about what's working. Like I said, we've been talking a lot, offering any supports that we can around them, sharing the data with their team, with their staff, facilitating those conversations at the school sites. Really trying to make sure that we're working smarter, not harder, so that we're taking advantage of those collaboration times. So that making sure that they are supporting the teacher teams to focus in on the planning of their instruction. Making sure that the time is well spent. Additionally, if as they review their data, we're asking them those questions and having them engage in those conversations with their teacher teams, is the data what you expected? Does it align with what you're seeing or what you thought was going to happen? And if it's not working, then what are the course corrections that need to be made? Also, again, making sure that they are spending time on on plan instruction, not just for when they're teaching their tier one kind of core instruction, but also that they're planning for the universal access times when they're doing the small group instruction. And so when we're working with our our team, we're constantly looking at what are the identified needs? We're trying to make sure that any professional development that we're offering both to principals and to our teacher teams, that they are targeted in areas that we need potentially more support. So for math and gambling, we're looking at that small group instruction, just giving more strategies, more resources on how teachers could potentially be supporting their students. Making sure that we're focused in on universal access, supporting teachers on how they put that structure into place in their classrooms, how do they group students? What are they teaching? What are they targeting for those groups of students? Learner strategies is another area of focus for schools providing PD sites about this piece too, making sure that we're we're focusing focusing in on those strategies for ELS. And then, of course, ongoing is offering PD for behavior supports. So our principals are constantly sharing together, listening to each other. All of us also go out, we do site visits, we talk to principals, just trying to offer support and brainstorm of what next steps they might be taking. And then also, all of our principals have administrator dashboards. And that kind of tracks their work that they're also doing towards their defined goals. And so continually learning, probably kind of stretching that out, we continue to add columns through administ- different sections to the dashboard so that we're able to give them an opportunity to respond as to what specific actions they're doing, what changes maybe they've been making, and they can be sharing, collaborating around that information as well. So as Kathleen mentioned, we do have some highlights, and so we have some schools that have shown multiple grade levels that have shown significant progress. And again, to share that he highlighted their work, we're very grateful to these two schools, Rock Springs and who have their teams to share their work and what they're doing. Again, we're grateful to have them here tonight to share some of their strategies. So I'm gonna invite up the principal of Miller Elementary, Caitlin Sevill.
Thank you for inviting me tonight. President Olson, our school board, and Dr. Barra in Cabinet. And I'm the proud principal of Miller Elementary School, and I'm here to just kind of share about the reflection that we've been asked to kind of think about since completing diagnosis, diagnostic two, we're both reading in math. I'm invited by four or three teams to come represent both their collaboration and the extension of them, which is their currently at the OG training right now, so she's not in attendance tonight, but if I could have them come up to you just to join me. And I'm gonna pass it over to Amber Fancer, who's one of my fourth grade teachers. I'm gonna let the teachers present first what they're doing in their classrooms, and then I'll kind of give a little overview of what I'm doing at the the big scale of of running a school. So you could just advance that way.
I'm gonna stand kind of back because I have a very loud voice. So hello, thank you so much for inviting us. We're very excited to be here tonight, and it was great seeing that data up on the board. I was silently cheering to myself. So we just really create a positive learning environment. We collaborate with our students. And we really focus hard on that UA time because it's so critical for each and every learner in our classroom, whether they're a struggling learner or there's some learner that needs to be enriched in some way. So we always start with our morning meetings, the kids always circle up, they greet each other, we sometimes do fist bumps, we'll do like a lightsaber good morning, we always have a joke of the day, just to kind of lighten the mood and have they have so much fun. You know, they're they're kids and we have to expect them to be kids. So we just create a really positive culture within each of our fourth grade classrooms. And during that time, we have students push in from our mild mod class, so we want to make sure that we are also inclusive with those students as well. We focus hard on attendance matters. We cheer for each other. When we come in in the morning, I greet my students with a fist bump or a high five. I tell them, thank you so much for being here. Sometimes I might, I might give them some Fanter bucks, but you didn't hear that from me. And then we do our social emotional learning lessons that really just helps help the kids become a big community, a big family, because we're together for so long that it's important that we're a family, we feel safe, we feel welcome, we feel good about learning. We love collaboration. So on the screen, you will see a keynote presentation that we've been doing through PBL, project-based learning. Our fourth grade classes classes both do that. Students were given choice. They went on to a kid-friendly website, chose an animal to research, and they just had it. They went on to KID, they were teaching each other, they were coaching each other on how to do certain strategies, and they were able to present in front of one another, which I told them I was presenting to adults tonight. So tonight's kind of my PBL, right? I'm experiencing this, so I know how they feel. I'm a little bit nervous. And we also took PBL to benchmark where we had a fiction unit and solved a problem for a character. So this was actually the left hand with the robot, it was saving the scarecrow from the Wizard of Oz off of his post in the field and how to get him off the post so he could travel with Dorothy. For collaboration with I Ready, Mr. McDonald and myself are really good about conferencing with our students. What can you do to increase the boards? What can we help you with? We fill in data charts. We have, this month, since it's Valentine's Day, we have a big giant heart on chart paper, and every single time they do one of their learning pathways, they bubble in one of the boxes. That's also a big celebration. I make them put their name in the box, and then the kids cheer like, oh, my God. So they're able to do their personalized learning pathway, and it encourages the students to do so. We also collaborate as adults during wheel. We take data, we think about, okay, what did you do to make this number on unit six excellent, because maybe my class didn't do so well. So we focus together, how can we make our students successful with this? We take it back to the classroom, we could take that back to UA time. Speaking of UA time, these are my two favorite pictures, student stretch growth. So the top one is reading stretch growth from one of the students. That student went up forty two points in reading, so that was a really big celebration for the student. His face just lit up. And then the bottom was math growth. This was actually from a student in our class that pushes into my classroom. And he went up, what is, I can't see that, fifty six, fifty six points. That was his smile. I, I, yeah, it was just the best thing ever to see him do that. And that's through universal access when we on their ability, their personalized learning. And we use I Ready data to drive that instruction. So we look at the domains, what can we do? Lessons from I Ready, I was a Bridges teacher last year, intervention teacher, so I use strategies from Bridges. We meet with groups for language arts and math for thirty minutes or maybe a little bit more depending on the need of our students. Just to make sure that they're getting exactly what they need to feel successful with their academics. Students are given their given choice for what they want to do based on their personalized learning. So I usually have four groups going, and they're either on I Ready, they're on Math Enrichment Games, they're doing Problem of the Month through SVM. As the time goes on, groups are monitored and adjusted depending on their growing or if they're a little bit stagnant, we figure out what to do, we make smart goals for those students. We come back six weeks later to see how they're doing. So that is just a little snapshot of what Miller Mustangs, tiny but bitey, do every day.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you, thank you. So when asked to reflect as the site leader, like, what are you doing to kind of lead this? And honestly, it's hands of my teaching staff and they're fantastic. They've been, you know, humorous. The work that I'm asking them to do. But really, well, having both are three basic things that I've taken from principal leadership in those collaborative sessions with seeing our vision and our goals and setting it on a dashboard and then working to having a whole school commitment to those dashboard goals, which I've led with full transparency using a centralized communication doc, which I call my hub. That is where I house every piece of information that comes my direction that I am disseminating to all my staff. So you'll see my stuff, the slides that are all my PD, that might be something I assume, for example, like the math PD that principals were given with my staff. I've used that common language in my collaborative sessions with my teachers. We do the you know, the tier the got it's almost theirs and the not yet's. We talk about what do you do with the almost theirs, what do you do with the not yet's? Come up with, you know, brainstorming different ideas of how to address those students in that way with our UA time, and then what are we doing next time? So really giving teachers a ton of me on how to kind of lead that whole session with them, because I want to do what's important to them and not just having for the sake of having a meeting. The next piece is really strategies and for instruction. So I've really worked on in collaboration time, focusing on those next steps, doing those look for is talking about how to differentiate further when we give that core instruction and how to like give intervention for that, having interventionist on campus. And then also collaborating with my SLT, my school leadership team on the walkthroughs and targeted look for us, what does that look like? What what things could we use to leverage that ideal state when it comes to the five dimensions of teaching and learning? The PD on that, so each grade level has a goal with student engagement or assessment for learning that they focus on, and that's a look for when I come into the classroom. So I'm giving targeted feedback on those things, specifically in UA time. And then the last piece is the teacher development and support with just building capacity with MTSS implementation at all tiers. So really having a deep understanding of what that system is, and I know it's kind of growing. So really, valuing the time that I have with my leadership team to really be sound, my communication to be able to disseminate that further to my staff has been really helpful. So we've really dug in, I've like leveraged extensions of TOSAs and things like that, like Heather Hedstrom with her work and I'm looking at just different avenues of support, even Heather Hodson as a math TOSE at Felicity. Like, I've I've consulted all the people who know. Because people are resources too. Things in planning, so we're kind of in in the beginning stages of looking at the D two data like more specifically in the focus students. So again, as a site that doesn't have any interventionists, my teachers are coming interventionists, so really working with them on looking at that data closely, just as Amber had related to that. Find those focus students, look at their stretch growth, and we talk about what can we do as a small move for that student starting next week? And just really trying to be intentional about that and trying to do the best we can with the resources we have and the best way that we can leverage it within our UA time. Um, the best we can with the resources we have and the best way that we can leverage it within our UA time. Um, and then the pieces that were. They pulled. Um. Work with Kimberly and real to apply for community. So I'm hopeful for that opportunity. Um, I hope that you guys want to preview that today and then uh. I'm. Don't happen that right now, but just like all the same fun. Uh, you have extensions of things like the American Card Association, like do good foundation and fundraise. Fundraising and then the site um based fundraising that we're looking to do in the form of a front run. Um, and then, of course, extensions of of cabinet and all that thing with like ISS and ed services and every every avenue of support. Um, and then ultimately, um, we're at a point of reflection. So talking about all the work we've done so far. Thinking about, you know, what. You believe behind, what can we do next? That's not gonna, you know. That's up and, but really help us to be leaning, working together. So that's what's happening at Miller.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Um, I think I, I feel a little special because I got, they allowed me to join their real time for the fourth grade. They were fantastic. Um, excellent job collaborating together, a great example. So I'm so glad you were able to come tonight and share with us. I think one of the things that stood out um with your group is you had the. With your principal to really say, hey, my students didn't get this. We need to pause and we need to go back and work on this. You weren't just, okay, we did this. They didn't get it, but we're moving. We got to move on to the next. You, you really created that relationship with each other that you felt comfortable, I felt. To say that to each other and you respected it and. Came up with a plan, helped them develop a plan to really go back and reteach and refocus and kind of change up the schedule and it's. Obvious that it, you know, it has shows results and helps our students because moving them along doesn't, doesn't get us anywhere because they're they're missing what they need. Um, and then I also wanted to compliment you. I love your hub. I think that's a great tool for your staff because it is so. Find it. I was really impressed with how you got everything laid out, especially at that meeting, how you were able to pull everything up. Um, it it's a tremendous resource, you know, because sometimes you hear, you know, you're in the PD or you're in the meeting. And you hear it. And then when you're finally in the classroom, you go, oh, wait, what was that they were saying? And so it's a great resource to go back. So. You are amazing team, amazing school, and I just, I really wanted to thank you for coming and sharing because it it's a great example for for everyone else.
Really amazed. Right. Exactly why we want to give them the chance to share just here, but with their colleagues and. Um, it's just fostering that level of collaboration, which is really amazing. So we're so grateful to them for being here. Next up, as we had mentioned, we do want to highlight also Rock Springs Elementary. So I'll invite up Principal Elizabeth Ramirez.
All right, thank you um. For inviting me, Board, I'm sorry, Board President, Mr. Paulson Cabinet. First off, I'm very honored to have been at Rock Springs for seven years. And I say this because I'm surrounded by my colleagues who are my PLC. And they support me to do the work to be the better leader that I am. So I'm going to go into a little bit about what I do to be the best leader I can for my staff. And first off, it's being, being able to understand, understand what my teachers are up against, what my students are up against. And I attend much every single PLC. I can understand the curriculum, the assessments. I understand which student is struggling and why is he struggling? That is my job is to know all five hundred children and my teachers and their needs. Taking that information, I go into all these meetings. I go into the seat meeting. I go into CSAT redesign, CSAT, give me a letter. I probably go to it. Every IEP, you know me, I'm there. But I know his needs. I know the teachers' needs and I can share that information across platforms. And say, wow, we have ELOP for that. Why isn't this kid in intervention? I know why, because we don't have an an intervention teacher five days a week, but what can we do? I try and, I try and make sure that these are decisive decisions every day and my teachers are the biggest part of it. The best part of my day is, you know, the classroom visits. I see kids every day on the blacktop. Good morning, good morning, Mr. Ramirez. I pretty much try to know every single name. But in the classroom, that's where the rubber hits the road. That is where I see my kids learning. My teachers teaching. I can give feedback to my teachers, but more so I can give feedback to that kid. I heard you doing really well. How are you doing on that? I heard you, you really went up in your I ready score. And they know me and I know them and I probably know their mother, father, brother, sister who went through the school. I've only been there for a little while. But I probably know them, but that helps me again come back and go, what does my teacher need? This kid be successful? What does he need? And maybe he just needs a walk this morning. Maybe my teacher needs a walk this morning. But that's my leadership style. My last part is I say asset based leadership. I do not know everything. I, I know that very well. I am not a first grade teacher. I have some excellent first grade teachers, excellent first grade teachers, fourth, fifth, all of them special ed. And I lean on them to give me that knowledge. When I sit in these PLCs, I look at them. I say, I haven't taught in twenty years. You're absolutely right. You're the teacher. I am the leader. We have to work together on this. And I gain more knowledge from then and then I share it with the next team that comes in and at nine o'clock, there's another team and at ten o'clock, there's another team and I can sit down with them and say, you know what? Second grade said it was like the best thing since sliced bread. You should try it too. And I come in from class to class. And I'm just in awe of what they've able to do. And I'm glad that I have my third grade team here and they are going to present specifically what happens. Because as I said, that's where it happens. It's in the classroom. So my third grade team, please come up. They are going to interact.
You know, they all dressed like. Hi. I'm. We appreciate this opportunity to share some of our best teaching practices. We'll start about data. Uh, I'm speaking specifically about math during our. With. This is an exit ticket. We then use the results to adjust pacing and decide if additional review or advanced topics are needed.
For reading, our grade level utilizes assessments such as the BPSC, UPA and iReady. To monitor student progress and make instructional decisions. The data is used to create specific goals for each student. And it helps us to see if the majority of the class is struggling in an area or needs addition additional support. We then share the data and collaborate to ensure student success.
Um, and writing, we use the uh professional learning communities. Uh, there we allows us to look very carefully at the district writing assessments and the um benchmark writing assessments. Um. And. Um.
Next, we'll be discussing, discussing measurable goals and um. Look. Good. Purple. Look. The staff. I've. Then. That I'm. There. At. We're. That. Oh. That moment. At that moment. I. Now I. Last twenty percent. His words. Because he set a clear benchmark. I had a better understanding of where I stood and what was left to do. This is. Of what measurable goals can do for us as we walk down the path of learning and growth. Just. Procedure. Clear. As. Up. Right. On. Okay. The. After progress. And. Their own learning journey. When we recognize. And. We. This process empowers students, gives responsibility and motivation they need to be successful. By setting measurable goals, we're not only guiding students towards academic achievement, but. And.
Next, I went on small group instruction in our third grade classrooms. Our grade level implements consistent database small group instruction daily. These small groups are based on the individual needs of our classes at the time. Our groups are very consistent. We ensure that we do that every day, as I said, so my students. All grade level students are very familiar with the routines that are in place for our reading. This allows. All the activities that they're completing and also motivates them to reach their goals. Oh. We. Prices provided by district TOSAs. Yeah. And. Thank. But. Just. Out. During the. Which will have. In on town. And. To learn well and both in the public small groups. And. You can tell by the looks on their faces and the conversations that they have during small groups. And when I say, all right, it's almost time for small groups, you hear everybody say yay quietly to themselves. Oh. Actually, exciting in the classroom. Small groups are a fantastic time to add an element of fun to our school day. Overall, we utilize small group instruction to motivate our students and to help them achieve academic success.
Uh, I truly believe a lot of our success at Rock Springs comes from having a positive school. As well as the classroom environment. Um. Positive caring learning classroom environment facilitator, the daily class meetings or morning meetings. Uh, provides a valuable connection for each student uh that feels supported. Relationships. Uh. Therefore, they're more comfortable to take a risk, try hard. Be a part of what's going on. Um, students working in those caring and supportive environments. Uh, feel safe to take a risk and they become. In their learning, so they're not passive participants. They're engaging. Uh. They share their opinion, their thoughts, their ideas. Book club conversations. They make connections to their texts. They keep track of their own thinking. Uh, thinking about what they're thinking about. Just know, um. We spend a lot of time making sure they know how to ask and answer questions and. Really, listeners with each other. Of each other. Um. And making connections to everything they're doing. Uh, basically, they are. So they're participating in their own learning. Uh. And feeling that connection to others, classroom, their teacher. The kids. Kids. Those. Made our. Grade level successful. Right? Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm grateful. I only brought three friends because I have a lot of them who have shown great success, but thank you for this time.
Fantastic. Well, I. Um. Don't know. I think that's. Element that we heard around is welcome instruction, the use of data creating. Building relationships with your students, having those connections and building. Um, lessons. So it's, it's complex work. Um, but these are great examples and a few, I'm sure of many that are out there as well, but really just shining examples of of what can be done. So we're. For them being here today to share that work. Any other? For the team?
You want me to go around? You go first.
I'm not shy. Thank you. I wanted to say, um, thank you to all the principals and the teachers who are here tonight taking time out. Um, I really appreciate all the time and effort, energy you've put into our schools and our programs. Um, I feel um very. Um, happy to have attended two of your principal meetings. Thank you for letting me attend those because I can really see the. And the thought. And Graham coming up with solutions and problem solving. Um, our. Educated. And thank you enough. I appreciate all the work. Uh, I love to. I think. We have most incredible teachers and we have the most incredible principals here. Um, and we have a great team assembled to really make a positive impact on these students. Obviously, our scores aren't what they, we want them to be. We have a long way to go. Um, so I'm going to stay positive tonight because you guys are doing a tremendous job and I appreciate all of you being here. Um, and creating this positive environment for our students.
And I'd just like to hold those same sentiments. Um, uh, and I will do so as soon as Mr. Houston has completed.
Didn't raise my hand fast enough. I apologize. I also, and and I wanted to just kind of go with what Zessi was saying. What you guys are doing is phenomenal. Uh, when we started in this program, it was a big question mark. And we were kind of going, how, how are we going to do the universal?
Access.
And how are we going to make sure that it gets implemented in a timely manner? And how are we going to make sure that? We are able to. Put the cohorts into an area where they're. Essentially. At the same, so we, so we're not teaching thirty cohorts or thirty kids at one time. And you have some kids sitting in the back having no idea what's going on. Uh, the small groups, I love that. Um, uh, it's, it's amazing to see, to see the growth that we have and I'm very excited. Like I said, uh, we are, numbers aren't where we would like to see them, but we also know that we had a very big hiccup. That really slowed it down. It's going to take a long time to give back. And uh, we do recognize the hard work that all of you are doing and it's very, very. Impressive on my side to see what you're doing, how you're doing it. And I'm very appreciative of all the hard work that you guys are doing. And please keep it up. Because we, I, I, I really like to see, where, where are you guys going to take this? Because I think we're just going to pull it out the. Or or hit it out of the park soon. So I appreciate that. Go ahead, Doug.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Houston. Uh, I also want to just say, Dr. Pilia, I agree with you. This is um. Uh, those are some shining examples of what we're doing. Um, and I think what we know very well is that. Things like this are happening in each one of our schools. Um, and that's heartening. I do. I see the incredible hard work and the very good work that our teachers are doing. But I also see the discrepancy between that and and our state test results. Uh, and I think everybody recognizes that and as uh Mr. Houston and Ms. Harper say. Oh, nobody, nobody in this room is satisfied, right? We know that we can do better. Um, I've got a, I, I do want to say that one of the things that. I, I am just so proud of this district for is the amount of data we have. We know that state testing changes constantly. With our iReady program, we now have consistent results so we can compare. Uh, one, uh, we can compare a cohort of students, which you don't see all districts in the state being able to do. Uh, one, uh, we can compare a cohort of students, which you don't see all districts in the state being able to do. We can, uh, we can look at multiple sources of achievement data and not just wait until one grade level. Um, so that's really good. And the use of that data, I think, is on its way to being exemplary. I do, I guess my big question is just what more can we do maybe as a community? Because we see this discrepancy between the extremely good education that students are being provided. What more can we do as a community on a, on a larger scale? Um, possibly to give our students academic advantages. So that's a question and it's a big question, um, that I think I'm hoping everybody will think about. Um, and then I've got some specific questions going way back to that cohorted. Um, but do you have any thoughts on that? What more can we do as a district, as a community?
Well, I think per the discussion that we've been having tonight, I think staying the course. Really ensuring that we're continuing to allow for our teams to collaborate. I think that that's been, um, a big shift and a priority in how we do the work. We know that that question is, is so, um, it's so complex and not one person has the answer. So just making sure that we are, um, allowing our teacher teams to come together, giving them the tools that they need. Which includes that, the time, the resources, so that they have what they need. But together then they could come together and share their ideas and really be able to, um, collaborate around solutions of how to best meet the needs of students. I believe also our focus on engagement, um, kind of including our families, uh, ensuring that our students continue to, um, be invested in coming to school. And that you heard that too, as, uh, teachers are working towards creating engaging, meaningful learning for students. So I think staying the course on those will continue to help us.
On, on that same vein.
That if students are gone, if they go away, or if they're out for the summer, they perhaps are learning only in English and maybe they don't speak English for several months, or they haven't had an opportunity to read or practice math, that there may be a summer slide. But I don't know of a way to quantify what would have the most impact.
Summer slide, that was the word I was after. Thank you so much. And so I guess-
I could expand on that also. I mean, and that's why with the data that we have available now, like, we can drill down and we could see who are these kids by name. And the teachers can tell us exactly what's going on with Jimmy, what's going on with Mary, whether it's attendance, it's like, oh, this is what's happening, you know? Lost in the family. And that's where we get down to at the school, the grade level. Those conversations that they have, they know the kids, they know the situation, they're filling in the blanks. And from that, every gradable looking at it, it leads up to, I mean, and just looking at from my base, you know, from my frame of mind, first grade, look what's happening in first grade. What happened in first grade? The formative years of when phonics is taking place, when number sense, they had pretty much, there were a major, a lot of them, half of them were on digital only. And the other half were here a few days a week. And then what happened the second year? So, and that's why the kid, the teachers, by them being a part of this, they're able to diagnose, this kid needs number sense, let's get him that. And then they start breaking into that. That's why it's having the teachers involved in the planning for the next steps is very crucial.
Absolutely, and I think we all understand that. I think the point I'm trying to make is, summer slide, is there anything we can do as a district to help mitigate that summer slide that I think we all know happens? Because in Escondido, many of our students are not going home to highly enriching math and literacy-based settings. It's just not feasible.
Absolutely. I think that that's, again, we're fortunate to have ELOP, and we are able to offer our summer programming for our students for all of the grades. And that's been extensive, extended. There's 19 days, and then there's some additional bridge camps even, because we want to make sure that those students are still interacting and in settings where they're using academic vocabulary. They, of course, have some intervention components as well, along with the enrichment to make it engaging for them. So that is something that we are fortunate to be able to offer, and we'll be offering it again.
Thank you.
Just a couple more things, sorry. I just wanted to say, I didn't get to mention Rock Springs. I appreciate you presenting, and you do have a positive environment on campus. You can tell when you walk on your campus, so that is excellent. And I also, going back through the data, so thank you Kathleen for putting this all together, because I know this is a huge, both of these things are massive undertaking. So thank you again for putting that all together. On these, I was slightly mentioning it, but I was wondering if we could track, because I love this, the match cohort or across the grade level, maybe we just track the kids by their graduation date? So we just have a running total, especially if we're gonna do any more, if we're gonna start collaborating more with the high school district. That way, we have a, you know, a kind of a number to kind of track them with. You know, I thank Mr. Weller from the high school board for being here tonight, because I know you are interested in collaborating with us and really having a cohesive education system for our students all the way through 12th grade. But I think, I like that matched data, and then also, if the same thing on when we break it down by school, if we could have more than just the previous year. I know, I know I'm asking a lot. So maybe I could play with the numbers and come up with an easier way to show the historical data, so you're not putting, you know, so much time into recreating it every time. Okay, I love you. Okay, perfect. Because I would love to see that, because I would like to see as they progress. And then lastly, I just, I really want to shout out those schools, like you said, that have had three grade levels, have meet, you know, meet their performance, because that's more than, you know, that's half their school, which is tremendous. So Conway, Miller, Oak Hill, Reedy Creek, Rock Springs and Rose, tremendous. That's excellent to see that type of growth, and some of these double-digit growths as well. So excellent job for those schools. But again, thank you to all the principals for being here and staying with us and your dedication. It is not unnoticed by us as a board. We see how hard you're working, and we appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. Principals, thank you very much. Dr. Ibarra, does everybody need to stay for the audit report? Or are they free to leave and prepare for-
Only if you want to learn about our audit reports, should you stay. If not, we'll-
We'll take a third second.
We're gonna take a three-minute break.
Thank you, everyone.
All righty, we are moving on to item N1, our 2324 audit report. Good evening and thank you.
Good evening. Good evening to the board president, superintendent, cabinet, and board members, and audience. My name is Peter Glenn, I'm with the audit firm Nigro and Nigro, and I'm here to talk about your 2324 audit report, and to go into kind of a high overview of the process and some of the contents of the report. So, the audit approximately a year ago began for the 2324 fiscal year, and it took place over a period of several months and culminated in the report which we issued in December. The different little phases of the audit, if you will, take place in the early spring, summer months, when we test compliance and internal controls. And then after the board approves the unaudited actuals in September, that's when we test the balances and the transactions in full, and we wrap up all of the different compliance areas that we have to test. The audit is an independent entity, it's an independent firm. That, we're not, no part of the district, we're no part of the state, we're no part of the federal government. So it's completely independent, although we do use the federal compliance requirements, the state compliance requirements, which change every year. There were several new ones on the state side. So we issue four reports. The first report has to do with, is the, are the financials presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles? And are the amounts that are in the audit or in the financial statements considered to be fairly stated? That means, are we ver, we're basically verifying your balances and your ending balances so that you can move forward. So the answer there is yes. The next three reports, the first report has to do with your internal controls over that financial reporting. So there were no deficiencies found there in any of the internal controls over financial reporting. And then the last two areas, one is a state compliance area, one's a federal compliance area. So with the state compliance area, we audit a number of different areas that we focus on. Those are shown on pages 75 and 76 of the audit report. And those are things like attendance, independent study, you know, the school accountability report card, just to name a few. The ELOP was new this year. Transitional Kinder also new this year. So all of those areas were audited, and we had some finding and recommendations on that one. And then with the federal section, we had two federal programs that we looked at. The ESER program, which was the end of that program, and then also the Child Nutrition Services Program. So we had some recommendations when it came to that. And then at the end of the report, we had some recommendations, mostly when it came to some of the areas of ASP and cash collections and things of that nature. So that's really the high overview of the report. We'd like to thank the district for their cooperation during our audit, and to Andrew and his team in business services, and Michelle, of course, and fiscal, as well as the other departments that we worked with, facilities and human resources and several others. So we appreciate that. And if there's any comments or questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you. I'm just assuming that these recommendations are all being incorporated in a expeditious fashion.
Yeah, in fact, we communicate with our auditors throughout the process, and so much of this has already been addressed. So the action tonight is to accept the audit report.
So, looking for a motion to accept the audit report.
I move to accept the audit report.
I'll second.
Ms. Harper moves, Mr. Houston seconds. Please vote.
Bob, you don't have music when you guys vote. You're missing out.
All right, motion passes three to zero with two not present at the vote. Moving on to item N2, Business Services Resolution 2425-14. Emergency waiver, go ahead.
So this is a resolution, emergency resolution, that precludes us from the requirement to do bidding. A delivery truck ran into the canopy at Philicita Elementary School and caused so much damage that we had to repair it immediately to keep the school safe. If it was gonna, if we didn't, we'd have to block one of the egress pathways out. And so, in order for us to not have to go to bid, which would have delayed the fix by as much as, at least two months, if not longer, to go through that process. So asking the board to declare an emergency so we can have that waiver, and work is actually already beginning on that.
I motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Houston moves, Ms. Harper seconds to approve Resolution 2425-14. Please vote.
Yeah, I'm ready.
All right, motion passes three yeses and two not present at the vote. Moving on to item number three.
Okay, I'm, let's see, in matter, in student expulsion case number 2024-25-033, I move that we accept the panel's recommendation of a full expulsion through 6/11/2025.
Second.
Ms. Harper moves, Mr. Houston seconds. All in favor, please vote. Motion passes three to zero with two not present at the vote. Moving on to item N4.
In student reinstatement case number 2021-22-22, I move to reject reinstatement and extend expulsion to June 11th, 2025.
Second.
Ms. Harper moves, Mr. Houston seconds. Please vote. Motion passes three to zero with two not present at the vote. Moving on to item N5, Job Description Certificated. Ms. Frank.
I'm looking for approval to revise the job description for intervention and impact teachers to meet the new state law requirements to remove, that someone have a valid driver's license, and to update the language to match our current job descriptions.
I move approval.
Second.
Ms. Harper moves, Mr. Houston seconds. Please vote. Motion passes three to zero with two not present. Moving on to item I6.
I'm looking for approval for another job description for PE teachers to remove the same driver's license requirement and to update the current language to match our current job descriptions.
So they don't get to drive a golf cart anymore?
No.
Then I move approval.
A second.
Ms. Harper moves, Mr. Houston seconds. Please vote. Motion passes three to zero with two not present at the vote. Moving on to item N7, Proposed School Calendar.
So I'm looking for approval to change the 2526 calendar to reflect our agreement with AAAA, to reduce two teacher days from, so the calendar goes from 187 to 185, and to move the minimum day from January to December.
Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion in just a moment, noting that this is the 2526 calendar draft. Dr. Ibarra, could you please explain for us the reason our calendar is the same each year and is set so it could be predictable for for the next millennium?
I'm gonna have Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. Give us the specific details of that.
The calendar committee, when the calendars were set, had one really big requirement, and that was that the school year starts after two full weeks in August. That, and then after the full two weeks in August, that's when the calendar would start for students. So from that day on, you can really, it's literally set the same.
So the history of this, having been on calendar committees and joint calendar committees for the previous 20, 22 years, I believe, is that we were always coming together and it shifted all over the place. And so the decision was made that ours was going to be consistent, starting on the third Tuesday of each August, right? And then just as standard, we would take the, for example, Thanksgiving, we always get the full, the full week. Winter break is always aligned with the Christmas holiday, and four-day President's Day weekend rather than two, three days, so that it's consistent. And then we are aligned consistently in spring break. Because of the religious tenor of our community, we always go out the Thursday prior to Holy Week. We are off for the entire Easter week, and then we come back on the following Tuesday. And that takes us out into June. And so that, for our families, it makes our calendar predictable, and you can literally go 100 years out and determine when to take your family vacations.
Correct. And this calendar was approved previously, but now with the revisions, because of our negotiations, we're making those changes.
But, and those changes, just to confirm, are just in the workdays for teachers. It does not affect what days students are going to school.
Correct.
Thank you. All right, in that case, I will now take a motion from one of our two possible motioning members.
I motion.
I second.
All right, Mr. Houston moves, Ms. Harper seconds. Please vote.
It's like she knew, like she had that right away.
Motion passes three to zero with two not present at the vote. Moving on to item O1, First Reading of Board Policy Regarding General Obligation Bonds.
So the obvious thing in here are things we already do, like having an independent citizens oversight committee. We have a flourishing one right now for our current bond measure. Most notably, though, there's been a change. Of course, we would ask the board this, but the board can authorize us or ask the staff to go out and measure the support for a bond, explore that through the community. Before we would ever do that, we would have asked the board, regardless of what is board policy, but they're just cleaning up some laws, some ed codes changed numbers. And so that's kind of the gist of this board policy update. It does not ask to authorize that at this time, it's just-
All right, looking for a motion.
I'll motion.
But if I don't second, it doesn't-
Then I will.
I second, no, I second.
All right, Mr. Houston moves, Ms. Harper seconds. Please vote. Motion passes three to zero with two not present at vote. Moving on to board member and president reports. Mr. Houston.
I have no report, just very excited to see as we move forward with the new UA and everything else, how that's gonna progress over the years. So I was really, really excited about the presentation and all the hard work that all the teachers and staff and principals are doing. So very, very excited to see how that's gonna move forward. So thank you for moving forward with that and doing that work, because very difficult, I can tell just by based on everything they're doing. So that's it.
I just had a quick report. I attended two of the principals' meetings, which were great. It was great to see the principals in action. And then I also attended a You Can Stop Human Trafficking Summit that was hosted locally here in San Marcos. And I wanted to just put some information out, and thank you Leonard for, that we have on our website, we have digital citizenship resources, and also the county office has digital resources as well. And then in San Marcos, we have a great resource, In One Safe Place, which can provide a lot of support. So it's, I mean, San Diego is one of the hotbeds for it, unfortunately, and we need to do whatever we can to protect our children from these terrible predators. And I look forward to our Education Foundation and our illustrious auctioneer on Friday.
Well, I'm looking forward to that as well, and looking forward to seeing whether that guy is as- The word I was looking for was ineffective, but we'll go with charismatic. So I did get to attend the D-LAC meeting, which was absolutely outstanding. Dr. Filia and her team did a very good job of getting input from that group for our LCAP. Quite a bit of angst regarding the current status of immigration, and there is a tremendous amount of fear and rumors in our community. I would just like to take a moment to address that, and I know Dr. Ibarra might as well. I just want to emphasize that our students need to be in school. Very important that we make sure that our students are getting the best possible opportunity for the future by being in school each day. Our school sites are doing a tremendous amount to make, to ensure student safety and support in the school setting. And it is just vital that students be at school every day. It is the best spot for them. And they are, they are safe in our schools, and they are supported in our schools. So I just want to make that very clear. Also, I just want to encourage everybody to come out to the Education Foundation Gala and fundraiser, and it is raising funds, let there be no doubt, Ms. Harper. Bring your checkbook, or better yet, bring your credit card, the black one. Our intention is clear, we are there to raise money. We're there to have a good time, we're there to raise money for classroom projects, classroom micro projects, and this is the best way, because I love their application form, it is one-page handwritten, and you get a bunch of money. We like that kind of grant. So just want to encourage everybody to be there. Again, thank you to all of our teachers, administrators, and classified staff for everything they're doing every day. And again, I just want to emphasize the level of data we're dealing with. The fact that we can sit and look at individual schools and look at every level of data just puts us so far ahead of most school settings. And the fact that we have chosen one assessment piece that we're looking at consistently, lots of other ones along the way, but we've got one that we can compare for for over four and a half years now, that is powerful. That is powerful. Thank you.
So thank you, Doug. I do want to reiterate to our families and all of our staff that there are a lot of rumors that are circulating throughout the community. And we can confirm that there has not been one instance that ICE has been on any one of our campuses or any campus throughout San Diego County. We continue to monitor the situation, but want to ensure there are rumors, and if you hear something, families, please call your school office. Connect with your family liaison. They will have the accurate information. So we know there's a lot of fears, and I want to continue to reinforce that school is the safest place for your kids to be at, and that if, parents, you have students that are suffering any type of anxiety, please connect with your school site. That's why we have school social workers. We have counselors that are available to talk to your kids, available in families. If you're needing assistance, talk to your family liaisons. They have a lot of resources within our communities that they can point them to. So that concludes my report. But again, let's dispel the rumors, let's work with facts. And, you know, I'm getting a lot of questions about, what do different policy decisions that are made? We're reading them just as, at the same time you all are. We will get, after decisions are made, we get guidance, and that comes from the state. So, and again, we don't know where it's going to be, but we just need to not overreact until we know exactly what the details are. Okay, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you all very much. Announcement of the next meeting, a board study session will be held on Thursday, February 20th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. The next regularly scheduled board meeting will be held on Thursday, March 6, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. At the Escondido Union School District, Carolyn Gilbert Education Center, 2310 Alder Grove Avenue, Escondido 92029. We are adjourned.